Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Board Meeting of Thursday, September 28th, 2017. I'd like to convene the meeting by asking you to all rise and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business is I'd like to resolve on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the minutes for the work session business meeting of September 7th, 2017.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to announce that the Treasurers Report for August 2017 is available in the District's Business Office. And now my favorite part of being on the Board of Education, Pride in Putnam Valley.
We have lots of favorite parts.
I have lots of favorite parts. I can't tell who.
This is a very, very unusual. This is...
Nope. There you go. Nope.
This is a very unusual Pride in Putnam Valley. And it comes after an incident that occurred at the very start of this year. As a matter of fact, Margaret, would you come up? She's here, the principal. I was with the principal and we were having a discussion about opening day and all of a sudden we heard this announcement from the walkie-talkies to call all administrators to the cafeteria. When we got there, we were running down the hall and quite, you know, nervous because we don't have those announcements unless there's something serious going on. When we arrived, we learned that a boy had been choking and that one of our teacher monitor, one of our monitors had used the Heimlich maneuver to save the young man. And we were both relieved and felt such a wonderful feeling of just joy, that's all I can say, that we had the people around this child who could, in fact, provide this assistance. And when we looked and researched the incident, we came upon the fact that a young man, a friend of the child who had been choking, was there and had actually told the monitor who at the table was a monitor who was there temporarily, had just come to the district at the time. And this young man had said, "My friend is choking." So this monitor looked at the boy and immediately called the regular monitor and the regular monitor immediately walked over to the young man and used the Heimlich. The Heimlich training had just been given a few days before the start of school by our school nurse, Kathy Hill. So all of these people together were responsible for this amazing act. And we felt that we wanted to celebrate the good things that happen in this school district when people are together and they have worked on behalf of our students. So this evening, we would like to present Pride in Putnam Valley. And Mr. Podesta will help me because we were both almost in shock when we ran down to that cafeteria. So first, I would like to, I guess I'd like to start with the young man, AJ. Would you come up, AJ Justreus? AJ, Pride in Putnam Valley for your heroic efforts at the elementary school in seeking out an adult to help a fellow student who is in distress. Congratulations, AJ. You're wonderful. Next, I would like to, in the order of actually the occurrences, we will have Lucy Giannelli, who has, is currently a monitor, but at that point had been a substitute monitor, Lucy Giannelli. Second day of school. Next, we have the monitor who performed the Heimlich maneuver, and that is Christina Drew. Christina? And this Pride in Putnam Valley is given to Christina for her life-saving actions at the elementary school assisting a student in distress. And now I want to give the final Pride in Putnam Valley to our very own nurse at our elementary school who had the foresight and has the persistence and insistence to train our monitors in the life-saving maneuver. And with that, our wonderful, kind, and compassionate nurse, Kathy Hill, please come up. And this is to Kathy Hill for her efforts in ensuring that staff members are trained in the Heimlich maneuver which resulted in the life of a student being saved. Congratulations. Thank you. We're very, very grateful. And we need more of these moments, as many as we possibly can store up, of the good things that people do in our schools and our community. So thank you so much. This is one of those moments we'll all remember. Thank you. Mr. Ferraro pointed out when I said that Pride in Putnam Valley was my favorite part of the board, being on the board, that I have lots of favorite parts of being on the board. And another favorite part is whenever students are presenting something that they are incredibly passionate about. And that's our next presentation is about this year's science research topics among our sophomores. And we have Mr. Zupan here to introduce his students and their topics for science research this year.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna be up here too long, but it's nice and I thank the board for starting this course four years ago and being behind it. And our first year, like our, we had our first graduating class last year, five seniors, and they're off in college now. We've, you know, been communicating back and forth. And this year sophomore class, now we have 19. So this class has doubled from last year, which is really great to see. And so we actually have to kind of divide this up. And now we have, so we have half of the sophomores presenting today and we'll have the other half presenting at the next meeting. So these are all sophomores that have just started the program and they are just presenting their topic they're interested in. And right now, they're looking for, and if anyone can help find mentors for them to help them complete their research. So I will let them explain and you can see how passionate they are about each of their topics, so.
My name is Colleen Cassidy and this year I'll be studying neuroscience because I find it really interesting how the human brain functions. I'll be looking for mentors in the Westchester and New York City area. Thank you.
My name is Corinne Davis and I would like to research a topic in the animal science career with a focus on biochemistry. I'm looking more in the Westchester area and I would prefer something regarding birds, however, in the animal would be okay with me.
My name's Shannon Denizo. I'm studying the effects of technology on behavior because I find it interesting how one object can change behavior. I'm looking for a mentor in the New York area studying behavior science.
Hello, my name is Aiden Emery and I'm interested in researching the evidence of microbial life on Mars. I think that unlocking the secrets to Mars' past can help us with Earth in the future.
My name is Sam France and I'm interested in quantum computing because I think it could change almost everything about the future of technology. Ideally, someone in IBM Yorktown nearby would be a good mentor.
Good evening. My name is Sydney Goldberg and I'm gonna be studying something in the field of Crohn's disease. I'm studying Crohn's disease because at the age of six, I was diagnosed and ever since then, I found it very interesting. I'm looking for a mentor in the Westchester, New York City area. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Matthew Richards. I'm studying plastics effect on the environment. I feel this is a major problem in today's society and it's something that's gonna escalate over time, something to be fixed. I'm looking for a mentor in the New York area and...
Hello, my name is Chris Sauber. I'm working on improving the efficiency of hydrogen engines because it could be a potential new fuel source for many different machines all over the world. I'm looking for a mentor in the mechanical engineering field.
Hello, my name is Michael Tompkins and I'll be studying nutrition because of the obesity epidemic that is facing America. I'm looking for mentors in the Westchester area.
Hello, my name is Alex Waters and I'm studying genetics because I think it's important to look more into genes to help figure out like more genetic diseases and I'm looking for a mentor in the Westchester area.
Again, thank you very much. I'm always amazed that sophomore level, they're able to get up and talk in front of everyone. I would not, I'd be running out in the hallway and probably crying if I, you know, if I had someone ask me to do that just as a sophomore. So, you know, it's really interesting again, and then these sophomores will be competing in June in their first competition and they'll keep on going over that the next three years. So it's nice to see two other science researchers that are on their path a lot further on and kind of see where it leads to. So we'll be back in October, hopefully have really good news with some mentors. But if anyone knows anyone that would be interested in mentoring or is thinking about that topic, any of these topics, to please contact me and we can discuss the program and everything else and go through it. So, but it's awesome to see the passion these students have. Thank you guys very much.
And Mr. Zupan, well they, I remember in the future, we'll have the other half next week or the next board meeting, but we have an evening where they can in-depth talk about their projects?
Yeah, we, every May 22nd, we will have our local symposium where the students will be presenting right in here. They'll each have their own large six-foot, four-foot posters, be presenting their research. And for the juniors and seniors presenting their progress that they've been competing with over the past year. And we'll have other practice nights for the juniors and seniors throughout the year as well. February 15th and January 19th will be two other dates as well. They'll be, will be petitioning out for anyone to come in and listen to them and be able to offer any questions or comments I have about their presentations. Thank you.
I would just also, just cannot help but comment that without a teacher with the passion and the understanding of how to communicate effectively with young people and to bring them along in this process, this could not occur. So, Mr. Zupan, we thank you for what you have put into this program. Thank you so much. We now also have a home base for our science research program up in the library, which is really, really works quite well because, you know, it's in that space and they have their own home. And one of the benefits of the program and, you know, one of the side effects is that you develop a community. These students are part of a community themselves and they have the opportunity to have conversations, to interact about the work they're doing, and it's more like a professional community. It's the, sort of the way a professional community operates, a community of scholars. And so this is a very powerful program and we're so delighted to see it thrive and grow. And again, that's the teacher who makes that happen. And the range of topics. I mean, no two topics are even close, they're so diverse, so it really is exciting. I learn something every year, so it's great. So, all right, terrific. And that's the end of our presentation and moves us, Dr. Wills, right into the Superintendent Report. So my report, you know, now is different than it used to be because I would do the curriculum and I would do other things in the community. Now I focus on many of the community outreach programs we have and our general district programming. I'd just like to mention that today I went over to the middle school and saw the family and consumer science class that's run by Ms. Albano now for seventh grade. And it was really quite an opportunity to see our young men learning how to sew and threading the needle, learning the running stitch. And now we will again have some young men in the community able to sew their buttons on as well as the women in the community. So it was one of those insightful moments because years ago, when we had Home Economics, it was separated. Only the girls had Home Economics. Now it's mixed and these skills are seen as universal. So it was a very, it was a very nice class and we're glad to see it back at the middle school. Last week, I was at a town hall meeting and discussed a number of our initiatives. I try to go there once a month, sometimes I miss a month, but I try once a month to talk about what we're doing in our schools. It's part of our effort to communicate more widely because when those meetings are televised, the entire community sees them, you know, people we might not necessarily reach. And we talked about some of the things that we'll be doing this year, including, you know, the implementation phase, the last step of our implementation phase of our later school start and so on. We also, I want to mention that our Facilities Committee meeting has been scheduled for October 12th at 5:30. And the Facilities Committee really is part of a long-range capital planning project. We've been talking about the fact that this is the time, as we look at our debt service and as we see where it's moving along in our budget, that it's a time to really take a look at our facilities going forward and how we can plan for that along with our budget. We also have a Later Start Committee meeting planned for October 26th at 5:30 because we'll be implementing that later start in September of 2018. And we're bringing together the Later Start Committee and anyone else who would like to come to hear the plan, the plan process as we move forward. So we will have solutions to problems that were raised last year and we'll have opportunities for people to, again, to ask questions, but our representatives, administrators will be there to talk about the solutions we have in mind. We've been doing some fundraising for devastation, the devastated cities. In this case, we had Houston, Texas, that where we started, the Coulter Elementary School, we adopted a school. And we now sent gift cards for $1,050 to Coulter and a box of supplies and books. Coulter, we believe, has reopened in another site and they needed supplies for teachers, for the teacher workroom, and so we've helped with that. And we thank everyone who was involved and participated in that. We are now planning something at a larger scale. We're planning a potluck supper and a concert for Puerto Rico. And we're doing that on October 17th at 6 o'clock. We're getting something out tomorrow about it. And we have staff members, we know people in our community who have been affected. And we also know that this is a sister, you know, it's always been a sister island to New York and there is a New York initiative, the Empire State Initiative for Relief and Recovery of Puerto Rico, so we are doing this in connection with that. And we have our teachers involved in, you know, the music department. We have others who will be performing, but we also have, we're planning an international, where actually it's a dinner with local foods of the island. And Ms. Thornton is running that, she's run the World Languages Club. So it's a, an effort that everybody is involved in. We're also participating with the library in the town in a community read project. So we've been, we met last week to look at some books that would be accessible without cost to everyone through the Hoopla Library Program. We're trying to come up with a book that we're going to urge everyone in the community to read together and then have book club groups meeting in different places in the community for people who've read the book and would like to discuss the book together. So it was with the town, our town supervisor, Mr. Oliverio, we had people from the library, we had clergy from the Methodist Church and from the synagogue. We had a good representation of people who are interested in this project and we're excited about that. We also have an initiative that was started by a member of the Lions Club from the past Putnam Valley to try to connect Make a Difference Club with the Lions Club to develop a Leo club here. And there are major Leo clubs in Somers and in Yorktown. And one possibility for Make a Difference Club by joining with the Lions Club means that they can have network with other students doing similar things in other places, in other schools. So there are a number of community outreach programs that we've become involved in. That's great. Okay. Thank you very much. And now our next presentation is by the Director of Learning. Actually, that's not the full fancy title.
No.
It's a short title.
It's getting shorter every meeting. Good evening. So I just want to provide a quick update of some of the things that have happened in the world of curriculum instruction and technology since our last meeting. From a district level, the district technology team met, the leadership of the team met with myself and we hashed out what we wanted to get done this year. A big focus of that committee this year is gonna sort of do a little self-assessment and they're looking for an opportunity to actually present the findings of that assessment with the Board of Education. So I'm hoping that sometime later in the school year, we can get them on the agenda and they can share some of their findings of their own audit of our current state of technology, what's working well and what areas we think we can improve. So that's exciting stuff. The Self Committee met as a whole district. They discussed a variety of topics, including a couple of district-wide projects that they want to get involved in. They established a self-reflection document, something to help keep themselves on track to be able to check in and see on their progress and without losing sight of those curricular connections that are, one of our goals is here, is to find those connections so self and sustainability does not seem detached from our current work. Yale Ruler Training has happened in, on several occasions. Myself, Dr. Wills, and members of the board attended one, a training one night, then the following day, the district administrative team attended a training, and then the following day, the school leadership teams. So the rollout of the Yale Ruler Program has already begun in each of the buildings and certainly more updates to come on that. Putnam Valley Elementary School, we had a school data meeting to talk about the most effective ways to both collect information and share that information with teachers to help inform their instruction. So I think we have some great plans in place. And we invest so much time into collecting that information, I was stressing how equally important it is that we provide opportunities for teachers to actually utilize that information. And we have a good plan to do that moving forward. And then I'm scheduled to go there for the faculty meeting on Monday morning. And at that faculty meeting, I'm gonna share our update to the district goals and provide the teachers an opportunity to provide feedback as well as an update on our APPR plan. The Middle School ELA Curriculum Committee is off and running and they're already doing fabulous work. I had the luxury of going over to the Mandarin Chinese class. I had some insider information that the teacher, who's normally there virtually, was physically there. It was very exciting. I questioned her coffee intake because she has lots of energy, but she did lots of games with the kids. The kids were really excited to have them there. They did calligraphy, they played games. So it was really exciting that she was there and the kids really enjoyed having her present within the room. Also, at the middle school, we had a similar data meeting and structures were in place for teachers to utilize that information. Mentor training sessions have been happening where the mentors and the mentees have been receiving training to better support them through the beginning of the school year. I did my faculty meeting at the middle school where we reviewed the goals, provided the teachers opportunity for feedback, as well as overview of APPR. The Building Steering Committee meeting happened and they reviewed prior year achievements and established plans for this year. Their School Beautification Committee is met and they're up and running. It's a follow-through from the Mulch Project over the summer. Their clubs and extracurricular activities have begun and they had their back-to-school nights, which were newly designed this year. At the high school, the mentor training also occurred, as well as the Student Mentor Program is up and running where high school students are mentoring fifth graders. We've had a lot of conversations around STEM planning, both for the present and the future, to develop a sequence of courses that build upon prerequisite skills from the elementary school through the middle school and into the high school. So that's something that people are very passionate about and are very excited to see that work. The IB Planning and Training has begun, as well as with an eye on curriculum implementation. The Yale Ruler, again, was already rolled out to the faculty meeting at the high school. And we're planning a Girls in STEAM workshop. A student had approached us, she's been involved in workshops in other areas, and she asked about facilitating one here. So we were ecstatic and certainly are supporting her anyway, so we're just waiting for confirmation on the date and she already created flyers, so we're gonna hang that up around the building. And the last piece, we're actually planning a new special education program and Ms. Thornton is gonna provide a quick update on where we are.
Sure. So at the high school, this New York State came out with different pathways. I've discussed those different pathways to achieving different types of diplomas with you, but Sandy Entriere and I sat with some of our teachers and came up with sort of ideas and a philosophy of what we believe needs to be embedded within the school. And a major part of what we felt was missing in our program was sort of a hands-on, pulling all of the different sciences, math, ELA, history into sort of hands-on learning out into the community, participating in activities and trips and building, as you know, we're looking to bring in a sustainability piece in terms of our, you know, just our approach to our curriculum and how we think about and treat our world. So we thought we would develop a curriculum. We hired Matt Danko, if you remember Matt Danko. He's our new high school science teacher who is also certified in carpentry. So it's sort of a nice way to bring that hands-on learning and all of the other components to, you know, Matt is working with the history teacher, with Mr. Grogan, with the ELA teacher and with, well, he's the science teacher, and with the math teacher. So undoing curriculum outings and within our school community to incorporate all of that. So we're excited about it. I think the kids are gonna love it. I think they're gonna buy into it. You know, students, for some students, they have specific learning needs and coming to school isn't easy. And when coming to school isn't easy and it's hard every day, you don't get kids to buy in. So that's what we're looking to do. We're looking for kids to be excited about coming here, they have to wanna come here. So we think that this is gonna offer a great alternative. So we think that this is going to offer a great alternative for student learning. Oh, and yes, the name, there was a little bit of debate about the name.
Oh, really? In Putnam Valley?
I know, in Putnam Valley, a debate about a name. Finally, we settled on TREK. I know, T-R-E-K, T-R-E-K. And it's going to be an acronym for Teaching, Resilience, Effort, and Kindness. But it's also, you know, we originally started off with the word Odyssey, and then we weren't crazy about that. So the teachers used the Thesaurus and we looked up different words and just decided, like, what did we want for, what did we want for our students to brand it, so to speak? And TREK just seemed like kind of a, kind of a cool word.
That's cool.
It's kind of associated with mountain biking and outdoorsy stuff. So trekking through the woods. And we're planning on a lot of outdoor activities. So we, so we sort of settled on that name.
Well, and I love that between the science research and this, you know, the buzzwords in education, it's a buzzword because it makes sense, is real-life application of learning.
Exactly.
And whether it's building something or exploring genetics, they're all real-life application of what we're trying to do. So this is fabulous.
It ties in so nicely. And I think that Matt's specific, Mr. Danko's specific skills and his ability to approach students and the other, the other team members, Mr. Grogan and Ms. Lewis, Ms. Hannah, just all of them, along with our other school's support staff, is, everybody's just so excited about implementing this new kind of hands-on approach. And I think we're all excited for our students, really excited for them.
Sounds great. And speaking of students, I'd like to introduce again, this is your first board meeting this year, right? Or am I just, remember, okay? I'd like to introduce our student representatives to the board. And if you can just say what your role in student government is and go into your presentation, that would be great. And introduce yourselves. You can go first, Erin.
Good evening. My name is Erin Peterson, and I am the Student Council President for this school year.
I'm Sarah Bros, and I'm the Vice President of the Student Council. So I'll start off today's presentation. The unusually warm temperatures haven't been favorable for our fall athletes, but the environmental club has certainly benefited. The club is continuing to harvest vegetables like purple bush beans from the garden at the high school. This year's harvest has exceeded expectations, and the club is excited to start planting the seeds that they will plant next spring.
The high school fall drama this year is Doll's House, and rehearsals have already begun. This year's fall performance is very unique because it's a black box style, which means the audience is going to be sitting on stage while the actors perform right in front of them.
The band and chorus students were lucky enough to take part in a workshop on sacred harp singing, taught by the Tim Erickson Trio. Sacred harp shape note singing is a non-denominational American choral music from the nineteenth century. This way of singing started in New England and spread through the South and was communicated through songbooks. In the workshop, students were taught about sacred harp singing and then were given a chance to start singing some of the music themselves. The students thoroughly enjoyed the workshop and would like to thank the Tim Erickson Trio for their time, as well as everyone else that made this workshop possible.
A new addition to the school year this year was a food and drink stand on the first floor by the senior junior lounge. The stand has been quite popular this year due to its convenient location and expanded menu. Students can purchase coffee, fresh smoothies, and lunch items on the way to class or to their lunch.
That's great. We are off to a busy start already. It hasn't been a month. So that's terrific. I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any of the current agenda items.
I have a few things based on what's represented so far.
Okay.
You were talking about community outreach and the Lions Club. I think we haven't taken advantage of a resource that's already out there because it's so Carmel-focused, Carmel-based, 4-H. And specifically, like TAG, the Teen Action Group, they meet regularly at the cornerstone. And there's very little, if any, Putnam Valley representation in 4-H, other than some of the horse stuff and livestock. But as far as any of the other stuff, any of the other activities or programs that are really great and they do a lot of good things with, like, I'm failing here, presentation skills, et cetera. But, you know, the Teen Action Group does a lot of stuff in preparation for their, their, their big fair that's in the summer. But beyond that, there's all kinds of things going on. I think because it's in Carmel and all the activities happen that side of the county, it is more of a schlep for some of us. But for part of, part of the town is really close to Carmel. So it's just a matter, I think it's out of, out of sight of the mind. And I think, you know, looking at 4-H as another avenue for our students to get involved, it's also tons of volunteer hours, you know, out of 4-H.
Maybe that's even something that Mr. Danko might, because it, 4-H.
Right. And our sustainability.
And sustainability, right.
And we had talked, you were talking about the elementary school and some of the sustainability stuff out there. We were talking about the trees around the elementary school and how some had fallen in the outdoor class. But we were talking about removal of some of those kind of beyond their life size, like life expectancy, when we were talking about the solar project. I'm just wondering if that's on, I haven't heard anything recently about it, how that remains on the radar to make sure we're checking for safety, especially around some of those trees that are really close to the building. Some of them are in the, way in the woods and won't make a difference. But if our sustainability program is looking to go towards the lake or the pond, the swamp, whatever we're going to call it, we need to be aware of that.
Yes. I know that there was a tree survey done. So maybe we will, what we could do is take a look at, I know they did cut trees along that, around the outdoor classroom. They did cut down a number of, and, but we certainly can look back at those other, some of those other trees.
Safety factor, sure.
And Ralph and I went with Dr. Wills and Dr. Luft to the Yale Ruler Presentation at BOSI's. And it was heartbreaking to take part in that because the research that was shared by the facilitator from Yale was talking, talking about his class. And the, you know, the session was about researching what the, his students, their, what they're feeling, their feelings and their expectations and what they think their parents are feeling, their expectations. And then what parent, you know, what educators' expectations were and what they felt they needed and what they needed to be trained in and the skills that everybody believed was necessary for a good life. And, you know, a lot of it turned out to be not a lot of stuff that we teach. Not, you know, it's, you know, and the thing that broke my heart most was when the thing that students wanted most was to be loved and feel love and feel compassion. As opposed to the, and remember, these are Yalies. So their, their stress level is high just to get in. And then to stay in and compete at that level. You know, we create this, this atmosphere of the race. And I guess Race to Know Her is a really great title line. And really think about it in those terms, the pressure that is put on to get in to this college, get into that college, get this, this score in SAT. I, I think that, like, we talked about the soft skills are the new hard skills and they're really, really important, compassion feeling and integrity. All that is, got to be so important. I'm glad that Yale Ruler was part of the process. But that, that really affected me. And it affected me that, you know, the next day getting home in my interactions with my kids. Because it's something that would have automatically triggered me in a certain way with hindsight and that thinking. It changed completely. My wife had not gone to that. And when I told her what happened, her reaction was exactly what my reaction would have been. And then I went into the conversation and it, you know, it really, I know I'm being very cryptic here. But it really made a difference just from that one, one and a half hour session. And if we can internalize that district-wide, I think it's an important thing.
This is what we're trying to accomplish in terms of helping students to recognize their emotions, to express their emotions, to identify their emotions. And, you know, ultimately to be able to reflect on, you know, on what they're doing, where they're doing it, how they are representing themselves, so that there's a sense of agency. And that's really what we're about. But agency is not just about action and rational action. It's about the emotional content and, you know, what we are feeling. And we've lost touch in many cases with what we're feeling at any time. Right now, we're working with staff first, and that is one of the bedrock concepts. That, you said this, we've heard this before, you know, the teacher makes the weather in the classroom. How, but very often, the teacher or the person coming into a classroom to teach is not necessarily aware of how he or she is feeling, just the way a parent coming home at night, not necessarily aware of some of the frustration you're expressing or the exhaustion you're expressing. And your child is at another place. And, you know, how do we build relationships? That is, in fact, the core of what we're working on this year, building relationships. One thing I did mention at the town hall meeting that is based on, on research, that people who lose their jobs do not lose their jobs based on their competency. They lose their jobs based on whether they can work with other people. And they have happiness in their jobs based on how they work with other people. So what we're doing is not really, it's often been denigrated, as you've said, as a soft skill. But actually, it's a life skill and it's a success skill. And so the Yale Ruler Program is an attempt to, to let us in on this and let everybody in on it. And one of their sort of trademarks is this mood meter, which, you know, you could have it on your phone or you can just have a chart in your notebook, which is what we're probably going to do with our middle school students in the future, have a mood meter chart in their agenda book. And, you know, you can go to that. And it has, we should probably bring one for the next, maybe the next board meeting, just all the different words to label an emotion. We often are restricted to a very few words when we talk about our emotions, but there are many words. It's a vocabulary lesson. And helping students to really understand what they're feeling, helping teachers to understand, do a check-in, a status check when I walk in the classroom, what am I feeling today? And how is that going to affect my students? So it's, you know, it's a major concept that often is overlooked. But people are no longer overlooking these things because there's so much mental illness, there's so much depression and, you know, issues with drugs and alcohol today, that we're taking a much more assertive look. And we're not, you know, being defensive about looking at this in schools and saying, well, that's not your place, you're just here for academics. No, we are here for the whole child.
And we are here to build connections with our students. I mean, that is really our purpose.
Building relationships is it.
Absolutely.
And it's all, when you see, I have to embarrass Mr. Zuppan again. When you see his relationships with his students, with those students in the science research, they want to be there because of the relationships that they build there. And we have to take note of what it is to really develop a great school. And we are on the, we are really on a path here of magnificent leadership in our schools. I'm very, very proud to be working with, with our administrative team this year. And, you know, I think we're, what we heard tonight is this kind of feeling about how we're attempting to, to move our students along.
And that kind of tees up the last thing I had on here was, we talked a lot about, I mean, we bolster our science program a lot. You were talking about STEM. I don't want to get lost in humanities because those two things appeal to certain types.
Exactly.
Than certain, but there are many students, that's not their thing at all. And we need to make sure that humanities gets the same amount of resources as well as innovative thinking as to how to implement those types of programs. I think IB will do some of that. But that's kind of, I think, a little bit more methodology and holistic. But I mean, I really, humanities, I mean, we do great with band and chorus and the music program. And the theater program, it's not curricular, at least the theater program's not curricular. I just want to make sure we don't, you know, abandon, not that we're abandoning, I want to make sure we give them as much emphasis on humanities as we do because we have just as many kids or more that science and math are not their thing.
And I can't agree more. And our humanities program at the high school is one of our most highly enrolled programs we have, where our two teachers work together, Mr. Degorio and Mr. Lathrop.
I mean humanities generally, not that class.
I know, but that class is a focus. But we have the art class, we have the literature class, we have the history classes. And I think we need to do, there are some other areas, the film, we're trying to get into as well. But I don't want to underestimate a program that is, just because a program is a club or co-curricular, does not mean it's part of the, not part of the fabric of the school. It is. It's what gets kids to school. Students who are involved, for example, in the play they're doing this year, Doll's House, that's an ambitious undertaking. It's a very important play about the role of women in history. And in their, in, over time, the role of women and how it's, it was seen and how women have struggled with that role. That is a major topic that our school district is undertaking with that play. And I'm very proud that we are doing.
It's great, but it's great for six kids.
No, it's not great for six kids. It's great for a community that comes to watch it. It's great for, you know, having a black box theater to do it and to think about the ideas that they're portraying. It is just one of the things that we're offering here that make a difference for, for everyone, for our kids and for our community. So I can't agree with you more because I was a humanities person and, you know, I'm a great believer. But we do have, we can't forget world languages. That's part of the humanities, and we've added languages. We've, we've brought back French. Now we have Chinese at our middle school. So we are placing resources in many areas here to, to build the great school that we have here, Putnam Valley. It's, it's a wonderful school district, and we're all committed to seeing it grow and, you know, and be what, what we want it to be, what we're longing to have, so.
And Dr. Wills, just, I think, since there was, you brought it up, for a presentation at the board about ruler, you know, would probably be a good idea. If not very soon, maybe once it's a little rolled out.
We have, one of our teacher leaders, Mrs. Bell Font, is, she's actually a FSLA leader this, this year. She's in the program. And she's put together a program, and I think it would be great to have her. In fact, I've talked to her about that, about doing one.
And I went, I actually personally went to a workshop yesterday and they asked, a room full of mental health professionals and teachers, asked us in one minute to write as many vocabulary feeling words. And only two people in the room could come up with more than fifteen in a minute. I came up with twenty-two.
That activity is right from the Ruler Training. That was something that we did. I know, in terms of Ruler, there's two big pieces coming up. The buildings are rolling out that mood meter, which is really an essential piece of the program that's happening throughout faculty meetings this month. And next month, buildings will be finalizing their building charters. And then during the Superintendent's Conference Day, we're going to do work around creating a district charter. So I would say after that point, we would probably have enough information and enough experiences behind us where that would probably be a logical time to do a presentation to the board, just to provide an update where we are.
And report back on how those mood meters are working.
Exactly, exactly. One thing I wanted to point out before, so aligned with our goal of building relationships and sort of one of the promises we made was to find more opportunities to engage our parents. We have scheduled our first parent engagement night, which will be October nineteenth. And the focus of it will be the LADI classroom, so the learner-active, technology-infused classroom. So we have someone from IDE, who is the consultant to do the training, so it's Innovative Designs in Education. Someone will come do a quick presentation. But really, the stars of the night will be our teachers themselves. I volunteered to come and lead any of the attendees through a LADI activity. So essentially, give them the experience of what students are experiencing within the classroom to really get sort of that firsthand knowledge as to what does it mean to be within a LADI classroom and experience some of those instructional strategies that are used within that classroom. So that was just finalized today. Communication went out to the community today. And it'll be the nineteenth at, I believe, six-thirty. Is that correct?
It'd be great if it could be recorded, and then parts of it shown at a board meeting, so it gets wide distribution.
I'll see if I can find someone who's got recording abilities.
Maybe, there may be so, right in this room.
Gina, I have one much more mundane thing to, to talk about. The, an update on the, the water bottle filling stations around.
Yeah.
When one of the, the students was going to do work on plastics and its effect on the environment, I was hiding my water bottle here, and I, it was a little embarrassing, because I know the effects of plastics on the environment, and, and I think we should all get reusable cups very soon.
Bravo.
Before it comes back next.
I have a couple fundraisers going on right now that are selling Putnam Valley travel logs, might be a good idea. I'll say.
The board, we need them. I'll buy them, I'll buy them for everybody.
It's a great idea. Okay.
Great idea.
It really is, because you're right, you know, I was kind of feeling the same thing.
Good.
Okay, let's, moving on to new business, right in the nick of time. We'll start, number one, with Mr. Fur.
Resolved and recommendation of superintendent schools, appoint Luciana Giannelli to a twenty-six week appointment effective October second, two thousand seventeen through April second, two thousand eighteen, extendable to October second, two thousand eighteen, as a school monitor at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved and recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board appoints Jessica Cruz to a four-year probationary term as a teaching assistant, commencing on October second, two thousand seventeen, and terminating on October second, two thousand twenty-one, in the teaching assistant tenure area at Septem-, at step three of the CSEA salary schedule, prorated and in accordance with PB CSD policy nine-two-five-zero. Ms. Cruz holds teaching assistant level one certification, teaching assistant three certification pending New York State Education Department verification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three.
Resolved and recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the board appoints Kelly Wilson as a substitute teaching assistant, commencing on October second, two thousand seventeen, at the substitute salary rate of eighty-five dollars per day, to be amended to a probationary teaching assistant tenure area appointment on step one of the CSEA salary schedule, prorated upon New York State Department of Education issuance of Ms. Wilson's teaching assistant certification.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Resolved and recommendation of superintendent schools to appoint Michelle Riley to a twenty-six week appointment effective on or about October second, two thousand seventeen, pending jury, jury duty service through, on or about April second, two thousand eighteen, extendable to fifty-two weeks as a school monitor at the elementary school on step one of the CSEA salary schedule.
Tagging.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number, what do we have to choose, five?
Resolved on the recommendation, superintendent schools to appoint Diane Hassett to a twenty-six week probationary appointment effective October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, through April sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, extendable to October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, as a bus driver for the district's transportation department on step two of the CSEA salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, that the Board of Education hereby appoints Maria Bradfield, a full-time teacher, to an additional point-two teaching assignment at the middle school, for the remainder of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, with compensation in accordance with the PVFT contract.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number seven.
Resolved and recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the two thousand seventeen, eighteen district-wide safety plan as per document number sixty-four slash eighteen, attached to the agenda in official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
This is basically a, a plan that how we will work with our community and all the groups around us, and that we will all be working together to ensure the safety in. The book, there's an emergency management piece in it, there's a detail on how the school people will respond, and everything is under the leadership.
Chain of command and all that.
It's also communication with the police.
Yep.
And responders, and so on, in the area.
And there's been so much work in that over the years, that they've analyzed events, weather, weather, and everything else, and really, best practices has gotten very.
And Mr. Bellino has been in charge of a lot of this work, and he will be holding a district safety meeting October fourth, I believe. It's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number eight.
Be it resolved upon recommendation of superintendent schools, that the Board of Education hereby appoints Dorothy Franz, a full-time teacher, to additional point-one, one-tenth assignment as a district-wide E and L coordinator for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year, with compensation in accordance with the PVFT contract.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, number one of the consent agenda.
Resolved to approve the consent agenda items two through twenty, as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay.
Anyone want to hear it?
Of course we do.
Okay, CSE, CPSE placements, we're approving as the district-wide sustainability team, which will have twenty-five members, the committee meets three times a year, and, and the members get paid according to the contract. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list, we're approving a student settlement agreement, where we had a student that, and the district came to an agreement. We're approving the engineering firm who's working on our modular building at the elementary school. We're approving the insurance for the storage tank. We're approving a release and settlement of agreement with another student with disabilities. We're approving an assistant coach for the varsity swim club, uh, swim team. We're approving thirty clubs at the middle school, we're approving a set of clubs at the elementary school, in chorus, in garden, in play. We're amending the appointment of a substitute, of the substitute high school nurse, we're appointing an online health educator proctor, Kurt Worrell. So we'll have students, because of the scheduling problems, who will be taking this one course online, and Kurt will be monitoring it. We're appointing a help advisory council coordinators, one at each school, we're appointing a high school science department coordinator, we're appointing a drama club advisors, there are two of them, we're appointing a PPS vendor contract for an additional student who goes to the Carafin School, we're approving the PSAP, the preliminary SAT proctors for the high school, there are twelve teachers being approved for that, we're approving the supervisor for the high school after-school detention programs, we're approving up to thirteen hours of prep work for two teachers who prepare for the six full days of staff TCI training.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was just wondering, in number eight, Mr., Mr. Cullen, who is the assistant varsity swim coach again, that we appointed?
What are you doing? You're really mean, Mrs. Thandiam.
Let's just check.
The person has twenty-one letters in her last name, you know.
Okay, TREC stands for teaching, resilience, effort, and kindness.
Swimming is very important.
You gotta work on that kindness part. It is funny though.
Speaking of kindness, I just don't want to forget to mention all of the work that our custodial staff has, has done in this move for the district offices and some unusual projects this summer. I know you had wanted to mention it, Dr. Wills, but it just sparked my, my memory of, and, and how much they have done, and how much they've gone out of their way this year.
It's really been quite amazing to see what has been accomplished by our staff, and by Mr. Bellino's work on that modular, and how it's come together.
Literally.
All of the efforts to make that happen, and it looks really fine inside for everyone.
We're all going to have an open house.
We're going to have an open house, we're going to have an open house, so that people can see, it's, we'll bring together the office again, and it really does make a difference when we're together and can communicate easily with one another.
And some of our offices are very together, I want to once again comment on the flexibility of the staff, the conditions they're working in, I think there's one table smaller than this one, that has four people working at it, and they manage to get along, collaborate, and I think some creative ideas have come out of.
Yes.
This enforced brotherhood, shall we say, so, but we, resilience, I think, is one of the ways you can talk about flexibility, and being able to adapt what's coming at you, and our staff is certainly role modeling that for our students, so. And I was hoping that next week, we'd be, next board meeting, we'd be talking about the move to the modular, are we that close?
It's very close, I think it's a week way.
Okay, so.
It's all about electricity now, right?
All about little Thomas Edison and Ben Franklin activity. I'd like to open it up to public comment on any topic at all, anything else from the board? And are we convening an executive session?
Yeah, very briefly.
Yes. I'd like to convene an executive session, resolved on the recommendation of superintendent schools for, for the purpose of collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, after which time no further business will be conducted.
Second.
Second joke, okay.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.